And all the plant processing and all the progress that the trainees have been doing this year. And lots of folks say, well, what can insurance company do with the air, their goal setting? Like developing body. But to answer this, we know we're a lot of boards like yourself. Their function long term, the rest of the community, it's just down to the rest of the population. It doesn't involve the community. You can see the time to have a game and a balance over this function.
Their boards are down low. Their functions. Here in Newmarket, that's not the case. So that's why we're going to be here now to assist you in this endeavor. And of looking at your field of goals, which is super important. You know, what do you want to achieve over the year? And this has been the end to the first future plan session. It's the way to get looking three to five years out. And quite frankly, I persuaded my members and folks to step away from this future plan because the world and the state is changing so rapidly around you. It's hard to plan three to five years out when, you know, sometimes even a year out is almost too long. When things just change. You know, it's nice to take a peek at 12 to 18 months. So hopefully that's okay with you all. That's what we'll do here again tonight. We'll work off of, you have this last year's report. It's all in front of you, which is nice. You know, we're not gonna, we've done the SWOT analysis in the past and I don't think it's, you know, we need to do that tonight. We've done things like, you know, what's going well in Newmarket, what's not going well in Newmarket. Again, I think we could save some time on that tonight. What I'd like to do is just start the process off with what's changed since we last met? Whether it's good or bad. So I want you to sort of think about that for a second. Now, what's changed since you last got together in this sort of environment, in this, in this community? It's good or bad and, you know, indifferent. You know, some things are good, some things are, yeah, and then some things are, it's neutral. It is what it is. And so I want you to sort of think about that. We'll talk about it in just a moment. And then we'll head into reviewing the goals that you've set the prior year. See how you did and take a look at, well, what was accomplished? What wasn't? Do we need to keep some goals on that list that just didn't get done? Or some objectives and turn them into new goals? And then do you want to set another goal or two that off this list? Is everyone comfortable with that? Where you can, we can start a whole process and organically set a whole bunch of goals. But sometimes it's nice to see, well, what got accomplished? And if things got accomplished on that list, it sounds kind of corny, but let's celebrate it a little bit. Because, let's talk about it. Because that doesn't happen enough when communities actually get things done. As you know, government does move slowly. And when you accomplish items on your yearly goals list.
So there's actually kind of a reward. I have to look back and say, hey, we did it. We did that. Makes sense? Let's talk a whole lot, over two or three minutes, so.
Sounds good.
All right. So what's changed since we last met in the community? What do you think? We're here about a year ago, just over a year ago. What do you got?
Well, we had a couple of things.
Okay.
Town finally made a decision on how we're approaching McAllen Dam project, which is great.
Okay.
We have our, we've been working a bit on the gateway development. Anybody else?
Water infrastructure. Oh.
McAllen Dam. The town made a decision on McAllen Dam.
Yeah.
What decision was that?
We're gonna renovate the dam down.
Renovate the dam?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
It just helps us a little more.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we had two warrant articles that passed. And one was the McAllen Dam. And then the second one was our water infrastructure. So those are two, like, pretty significant improvements that...
Just to let you know, with the water one, is that rural development came to us and said, "Hey, we'd like to know what projects you have." And we said, "Oh, we went along and we said we had about a million dollars to do some lines." And they go, "Well, we're looking bigger." And he said, "Well, how much?" They go, "How many projects do you have?" And so they're giving us a grant for, we bonded 12 million dollars.
Wow.
To, yeah.
That's remarkable. Is that, is that to update your current infrastructure or Scott the 101 pusher?
Current infrastructure and also develop another well.
Excellent. Okay.
How much of that was covered by the grant?
We're still going through the numbers and reviewing everything. It could be, we're looking hopefully around two to three million.
Great.
Yeah.
What else has changed?
Well, and here we listed facilities planned several times. And I think we've done a big job of going through and auditing, like doing an energy audit on facilities. And there's been a lot of work for things like boilers and even the front of this building has overgrown some changes. So a lot with facilities.
It was festive when I pulled up today.
Yeah, I think there's still quite a few on the facilities that need, at least I remember from the CIP meetings. There's still quite a bit to do, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, right now in the process of updating the HVAC for this building. And also all lighting is being swapped out, literally as we speak, in the process. So decided to address it. We did a energy performance contracting to do a lot of the projects.
Excellent. Good. What else? Those are positive projects? Anything else change or?
I mean, we're having, not so much the town, but it will impact us, this leadership up here on the school side. You know, we do share positions with the school. And that would impact, you know, how we do things in the future.
Change in leadership at the S A U?
Yeah.
Then the lost IT director?
No, not yet. And we did have, we had a retirement of a longtime IT director that we have to look at, how we provide the service.
The S A U is in this building as well?
Yep, top floor.
Yeah.
IT, that was a huge, big change?
It's going to be. He just announced his retirement, so.
Changes that, what else?
It's been a little over a year, but I don't think that we talked about it when we met for this session last year. And that's that we did institute a energy and environment committee. And so that's been a, I think, a positive change.
And that led to composting, or at least that pilot program.
Yep.
At the town's transfer station?
Mm-hmm.
So a community compost?
Yeah.
How's it going? I just wanted to know from my own personal.
Right on target, according to our DPW director. That's, that, the projections that Mr. Fox gave him, you know, were, say, it was, I want to say 27 people is about... You know, when, when they looked at our population and looked at the current system that we have, he had said right around that number, that that's what, that's what Mr. Fox expected.
Excellent.
So, so I guess.
Yeah, it's just good to know.
Yeah.
Figure it out the wrong ways. What else?
We sold that property that was kind of squandering, doing nothing on the other side of the railroad tracks. It's currently being developed.
Yes. It was a small lot that we did.
Tax deed sale or something?
Yeah. No, actually, now that I think of it, no, that, we purchased that back in the early 2000s to build an access road for a lot of money.
Now it's, yeah.
Now it's...
Those, those things happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just go more with the gateway development, economic development in general. Because we hired a contractor to be our economic development team. State economic development director's working with us to really focus on the gateways, but also our other properties that we have, such as the Wilson property, which is a farm that was purchased also in the early 2000s, late 90s. That's been dislanguishing out there, as well as they're gonna help us with marketing after.
Can't remember, was the north side 101 completed? Was that last year?
I don't know.
So, finally it's construction loads.
There you go. The 101 construction?
Yeah.
Which we drove through last year in the way, yeah. Yeah, I think you mentioned it.
Yep.
Did they finish?
Well, they were paving Durham today.
Okay, I think it's like another...
We are pretty much done.
Yeah, we're done.
Okay, new market side, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yes, from the north side of town, they got another sidewalks up and there's a town, a sign welcoming people to town. It looks a lot better.
And the roads were really pleasant to drive. I mean, it was before, but now it's...
It's even better?
It's true.
Hired a contractor looking for those properties.
I'd say economic development in general, not just the gateways.
Gateway?
Economic.
Gateway economic.
Development. It's sort of townwide, not just the gateways.
Okay. Okay. Just be clear.
We're addressing cell phone dead zones in town with AT&amp;T. So I'm so excited about it.
First met or something like that, do you know?
Yeah.
They are canvassing. Trying to figure out, they have their mandate, they won that big contract, they gotta figure it out.
AT&amp;T?
Yeah. Which will also bring revenue to the town.
It will.
This town land is gonna be okay though.
Wonderful.
So a regional trend that's, I think, really affecting us or continues to affect us, but continued this year was the tightening of the housing market. I mean, I think people are feeling really locked in, like they can't move, but they, even if they wanted to, they can't move around.
As I said to a few councilors, I got the preliminary rebound numbers today. We're adding about 28% value to the community. We're gonna be over a billion dollars for the first time.
Wow.
We're always, when we set the cap, we were looking at the tax rate last year for the budget. We were about 775 million dollars in valuation for the entire town. And we're well over a billion.
But I think it's a challenge for residents who maybe are gonna try and seek some tax relief, to try and move to a less expensive area. There aren't a lot of choices. And then that also makes it difficult for people to come into the area too. So it's kind of locked, I guess, is the trend.
It's tight, yeah.
It's very tight.
Options and the ability for people to come in.
Yep.
What else?
We've started a new outreach program. A few councilors have, are piloting next week. Will be the first one. So just trying to get out in the community and hear, you know, as a give and take.
Coffee with the council or something?
Yep, that kind of thing, exactly.
That's what it goes with negative that we've been having is that we're not getting a news coverage.
Yeah.
Because media group, since the merger, the takeover of Foster's, and they have a massive, a massive, but a pretty significant layoff last week. We haven't had a reporter at a meeting, I wanna say at least a year or two.
Really?
Yeah.
We had one.
Brian?
Yeah, he came to one meeting and then never came back, yeah.
I think he wrote an article and they didn't publish it. So he was like, they don't get paid if they don't publish it.
Yeah.
So I think he actually quit after that.
When I got, when I got here, there was two reporters covering every meeting. So it's difficult for me, because the government shouldn't be running a newspaper. And that's why I say, like, what we need to tell us, like, well, it's not our, not our job because we can't be neutral in this situation.
That is odd.
And it's a big undertaking.
It is.
I mean, beyond neutrality or anything, it's also, it can't be your job.
No, it can't be everybody.
Right.
I would say to kind of maybe bounce off that a little bit. The town does a very good job of trying to put all of its materials out there for the public to access. So folks can't say that, you know, it's not available, right? It is there, just not always...
I mean, your Twitter feed on your main website is pretty, it's very current, is that you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's...
It's great everything. Yeah, all the, all the departments have it, so.
Probably positive and negative is the, the school construction's about half done. Is about halfway done?
I think it's a little over half done.
Over halfway done? It's caused a few minor problems, parking and stuff, but bigger trucks drive through town. But it looks like they're making really good progress. I don't know, it seems like they're moving pretty fast. Good. Even with the weather we had? Yeah. They work all year round.
They don't stop, yeah.
They're planning on the...
We didn't get much snow as you guys did.
Yeah.
Yeah. When you think about really up north, I mean, they, they just opened the last of ATV trails in Pittsburgh because they were still covered in snow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Think about that.
I was golfing in March, so.
What else?
I think a little one, what cost a big kerfuffle was Church Street. We took it from one way going down to one way going up at the advice of some sound linkers. We thought that it would be safer to go up as opposed to coming down the road. And there's a lot of backlash at first, but thankfully, nothing bad has happened.
I think it's been positive.
Yeah.
Now. Okay. That was Church Street. They changed the direction of the one way on Church Street.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just think in general, it seems like we've been able to refine things as opposed to doing radical changes. So even stuff like that is a refinement of traffic flow and stuff. It's nice that we're at the point that we can make smaller adjustments.
Yeah. Yeah. Finesse things rather than drastic change or arbitrary change, which sometimes you see, which does nothing sometimes but disrupt boards and processes in communities. Good.
And another good thing for the town is that we're starting to look at issues that we have for infrastructure. I know Chair mentioned the two bonds that we had passed, but that's huge. After many years, we put things on the side waiting for the school to be addressed. And now we're starting to address our side of the ledger.
Yep. Well, it is competitive region. If you don't, people will go elsewhere. And that's, that's the hard part. What you see around the Seacoast right now is it is highly competitive. What else? Anything else change, positive, negative, neutral? I think the restaurants in town have been getting a lot of good press. Yeah. Do you happen to? I might be associated.
To be honest, I get that comment a lot. They, just around the Seacoast, people say it's nice, you can go through Newmarket and there's people in town walking around at 10 o'clock at night, where a larger community to the south of us has a third person school. Seems it flows at seven o'clock. There's no night light. Cat and rocks.
And I, you know, I would, I would agree with you. From the outside looking in, we do hear that about Newmarket, that it has, you know, a nice Main Street downtown feel to it with good food. Our commercial real estate right now is probably, I think, 95% full. There's a couple empty ones, but like six or nine months ago, there was like six or maybe more buildings. So it's, yeah, people are, and it seems like people are gonna stay, I'd say for the most part. Yeah. There was only one out here, it looked like a, like an old, was it a bank or a McDonald's? Oh, yeah. That was McDonald's. That's what I drove past.
Yeah.
I drove McDonald's out of town.
But I, there are people interested in them.
That's good.
A small one, but at our last meeting, we passed ordinance two, which would allow businesses to fighting that always can apply to be able to serve alcoholic beverages outside their door.
Private use of public sidewalks.
Yeah.
In any way, yeah. Schottmeyer Park probably wasn't, that was last year, right?
It was in the process.
That was this best.
What was that?
Oh.
Yeah, that was there last summer.
Right, yeah.
Schottmeyer Park are huge.
Have a point.
What's that? So Schottmeyer Park, the New York Community Church, I guess, gave the town, did they give the town the land or?
They, it was a group of people who were interested in developing a park in the name of a former federal conservation officer who passed away living in town. They worked with the church. They gave them a piece of land as well as an easement to access it right along the river. So now there's a park with a dock and giving it an ampering.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's great.
It was all community.
Sort of new green space.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And it's nice because now that's connected to that north end where all the sidewalks are, you can walk to it.
Yep. It's got to connect.
Yeah.
Yep. Anything else?
Were you including in the economic development, some of those, like that big construction project going on in the industrial part? Develop that new building?
I was not, because it's not, I mean, it's got a complete plan for the whole.
Not the one that's under construction, right by 101.
That's not the building, that's just site.
That's site prep, yeah.
But as it means, they, they don't build a building until a permit's been filed.
Right.
So it's been approved, so I'm not...
You're not counting it yet?
No, we don't count that because...
It is fairly significantly in itself.
They're removing fill.
Space wise.
Is that where that, I saw like a, yeah, much earthwork being done.
Looks like pyramids.
A contractor needs, the contractor needs the fill for the 93 widening project. He's buying land and out throughout the state and removing the fill and shipping it there. That's what it's for. What they come in and say is we're gonna expand the building. I don't believe that until such time as the permit's been filed.
Good.
It's something that you can call the driving range.
Interesting. All right. It's a pretty good list of what's changed. You mean a lot of positive, you know, a little bit of, like you said, I wouldn't call it negative, but areas of, you know, could be a concern in the future. But for the most part, it's very positive here in Newmarket, which is nice to see. You know, if you look back over the years as we've been doing this, it's over the goals from 17, from last year to 18, and then potentially what's gonna be this year, it's extremely positive. And we've made substantial strides as a community, as a school and as a municipality. So kudos to you all, because that's not always, that's not always the case. There are many times, it's Shirley and I go out and do these things and we go back and it's, it's tough. So I think when we review these goals next, we're gonna have some easy conversation because I think by the sounds of it, you have a lot of it in motion or already accomplished, which is nice. So is that, why don't we turn to page six of the report? And it talks about your 2018, 19 goals. And Steve, it's okay with you, I'll sort of rely on you maybe to give some updates on where we are and I think so we can sort of formulate future goals. But let's talk about the first one, facilities plan that coordinates with the CIP.
Done.
Okay.
We provided to council last fall. As we did for budgeting this year, we've included repair funds in the budget instead of putting in capital reserve funds. What we're finding was that we couldn't do repairs in a timely manner because in order to withdraw from capital reserve, we have to go to the council. Versus now, as if it's in the budget, as long as it's under the threshold for the spending plan, we can get the project done. In addition, we did sign the agreement for the energy performance contracting. And so instead of having to build a new significant bombs to upgrade the HVAC, electrical systems, heat, everything, the facilities, we're doing it from savings.
Excellent.
And it's going well.
Great. Some of the objectives underneath inventory of town on property, priority lists, needs to be incorporated. Is that pretty much done?
Yeah, done.
Okay. It's awesome. Make my job pretty easy here. Number two, economic development.
Yeah, add that.
That happened.
We have in the budget, contract economic development director. Reason why contracted versus in-house, those two. Much like when you contract with a law firm, you get a bunch of different talents by paying one number. And also, for some reason, the economy didn't go quite as well. We didn't have somebody on staff that we just, you know, not languishing. So we do have that actually in place now.
Excellent.
They are working on the council, again, look at the gateway, the three gateways. They're working with the property owners of the North Gateway to kind of put a master plan for that one. On the one. And after that's done, it'll be the marketing plan, which is the third step, which, yeah, this will be...
So that's the only thing hanging, but it's sort of in motion.
It's in motion, yeah, they're working on it, so.
Okay. Any questions from council on the last two? Okay. Quality of life issues.
You know, looking at, when we do get taxed through properties, it's what we use.
Yep.
Not a lot of them can. As you know, as the council knows, when they sell taxing the properties, they usually residential areas or mid tract houses. So we haven't had anything huge there.
But your example of, that wasn't necessarily a tax deed property, but you took a, a piece of property that was on the tax rolls, off the tax rolls and used it for green spaces, which is what you were kind of looking to accomplish.
Yep. The development of waterfront plan, it's gotta go, that's gotta be a lot more. Problem there is the deeds we have to go through to get access to the properties. We've talked to one of the larger ones about potential develop, working on in connection to what we have is across from the mills is a major space. Is, we're looking to wait and we can connect the downtown to that. And so we've been discussing that with a large property owner in the area. And get some, just get some preliminary costs of what we need. We've been constructing more sidewalks and, I mean, literally you can walk throughout Main Street, I think, throughout downtown on a sidewalk. And I just signed a contract today to update the sidewalk plan with our own town engineers to figure out the next step. Because what we have, and I'm not sure if the council's aware of this, is our sidewalk system is like a clover. You can get on the sidewalk and do a loop in different parts of the town, but you can always come back into the downtown area when you do it. So you can go from here, you know, down by the high school, up Grant, through the school, down Hersi, and then come back down, Ben is the one we're gonna finish. Come down there and come back downtown, you can do it the other direction as well. So it's all connected, interconnected that way.
Never thought about it, it's a clover, but you're right.
Yeah.
And the last one we just missed was the, the bike lanes, was that?
Yeah, we haven't had, we've been doing more of residential streets than the heavy traffic. The state put in their bike lanes on, on 101. To have them there, but, yeah, we have higher issues with the state on the south. Why are we able to suit each other, but, yeah.
They, they put one on the, where I live, by Newfoundland Lake, and on the state road called West Shore Road. So they repaved the road and they put this thing what they call a bike lane in.
Yeah.
And I'm like, and people use it, and I'm like, I don't know how nobody's been hurt. It makes me, I just, I, I cringe on the Saturday to be heading down there and you're like, ah.
Well, all of our back roads are like that, you know, Grant, Grant Road, Ashmont Road, you know, there's...
There's the cyclists in town.
Yes. Yeah. We have a big cycling.
Yeah, we have a huge, right, and we have a huge access point on down at the old, near the Rockham Green. There's Rockham Junction, there's an old trail, train station, which is now the rail trail. You can go from Portsmouth to Manchester.
Yep.
No kidding?
Yeah.
I had no idea.
Yeah. And it's like one of the very few on points.
And that building just sold.
Yes, for, is gonna probably be developed.
Yeah, I mean, he's, he's working on it.
Timber, by the way.
New Fields, this is a, just a New Fields guy.
Yeah.
And he's a cyclist.
Yeah, it was bike related, right?
Yeah, and so I think Wheelies is gonna, I mean, there's a big sign out for Wheelies. Last week, I think.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. Painted it, I mean, it looks great.
There was some graffiti on there last time I saw.
Yeah, no, the whole building's been painted.
The difficulty is that, that building, so our preambulation marker is literally in the basement.
Is it really?
Yeah, it's a New Fields end and...
Well, I heard that was the room that they couldn't get a liquor license because they weren't in one town or the other.
No.
That was just the room.
That would, yeah, it's a bit of a...
Should be able to get around that.
Yeah.
I don't think they're looking for one, but...
Huh. Well, you, you've accomplished way more than I, than I have anticipated. So I'm not saying that in a sarcastic way, kudos to yourselves. And I, you should really take a moment and pat yourselves on the back, you know, give staff a pat on the back and say, hey, you know, we did it. Because I, I think Shirley would agree with me, this often doesn't happen. When we roll back into our community and it's 90% of it's been completed orders in motion for what you wanted to have happen the year, the year before. So congratulations in a sense. I, I think if it makes sense to you, because you've accomplished so much, I think it, we have a decent amount of time. But I think we can move quickly because you're, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll just mention one thing that changed this year to that very point. And what that was, that we decided to align the council's goals and the town administrator's goals. There's one.
One.
One set of goals.
Nice.
In the past, it was sort of like, okay, we have the council goals over here. Then the council set my annual performance goals over here. I'm like, which do I pay attention to?
So...
Yeah.
I think this shows it was a good move.
It was, yeah.
Makes total sense.
And I think that we made them realistic.
Yeah.
You know, they're all, they were all, we knew, you know, we broke it down into easy steps and we knew that they were fairly attainable.
This was not 30,000 feet. This was achievable goals. And that's what we're trying to do here. When you set a yearly goal setting plan, it has to be low hanging fruit, achievable. You can't, you can have that 30,000 foot view, but that's another planning session. That's, you know, where...
Did you find the change more achievable and more clear about what you were supposed to do?
Absolutely. I'm not gonna lie, when we were setting my evaluation process now, I did have that little panic. I'm like, okay, where are the goals that I have? The council said, we both did, because we were like, see, do you have your goals? I'm like, oh, wait, no, these were the goals for us this year. So it was much, it's easier too, because staff knows what's going on. So it's not like, well, why am I looking at this document here that the council wants? But you have a whole different set. I'm like, oh no, this is, like I say, this is what we need to do.
I think it's pretty genius, because you're probably very much in the minority that that even happens. So that's a great point, thanks for sharing. And I'm gonna use that around the state when it comes up.
It wasn't my idea.
That's a, that's a great piece of advice. Because oftentimes you get those phone calls and, what do we do here? And you solved it, and I'm, I'm gonna steal it if you don't mind. It's the way to do it. So what I'd like to do is take a couple, let you have a couple minutes to think through. Now that you, we've talked about what's potentially changed in the...
changed in the community since we've been here since the last year, we talked about how these goals are going right now, what's in motion, what you've achieved. Take a moment, and come up with two goals that you want to achieve over the next year individually. We can move fairly quickly through this, because again, you're a smaller board, council, there's only eight of you. Think about what two goals you might want to achieve over the next year. And then we'll come out of that, we'll come up with another three goals to accomplish in nineteen and in twenty. Does that make sense? Okay? What much you want to achieve over the next year? Maybe even stretch it to eighteen months, but within a year's time. What are the low-hanging fruiters out there? What, where do you need to focus your efforts? And remember that they, these goals also need to align with Steve. Can Steve get this done over the next year or so? You need to, now that I know that, you need, that needs to be into consideration, because if he can't get it done in a year's time, which I'm sure he would tell you if he couldn't, you don't want to send him up for failure. Debbie, Steve Trumbull?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do a meditation right before we head out to one of the breaks, we take a school route there.
Yeah.
It's on the street, which I just get to ski it.
It's cool.
It's nice.
It's on the bucket list, yeah.
Yeah.
That's me.
So Trumbull? Yeah, I skied there, it was minus twenty degrees that day.
But it's great skiing, right?
It was, it was fabulous, but it was really, really cool.
And the village right there, too, you just jump right on the mountain, so.
Now locally, where do you go most of the time?
Um. I guess you may want to go to like, the Batata Springs, or you want to get the E T F.
We do a big trip to Sugarloaf, and then we ski every weekend at Ragged, which is in Danbury. It helps when you're fifteen minutes. Everyone just about ready? Yeah, within reason? Amy, do you feel comfortable leading us off?
Sure.
You got a cold going on, huh?
Yeah, I do. Well, I think that we're in progress with a couple of these, so I would like to see these continue.
Yep.
So economic development and quality of life.
Mm-hmm.
So, and even though we've done a lot with the sidewalks, I would like to see that continue, like just to, to grow that, to be able to get more people to be able to come downtown without having to get a, bring a car. Parking's an issue. So just different, different ways that we might be able to solve that problem. Bringing people into downtown, but not having to drive.
Okay.
And, the, I don't even know how to, how we would even go about addressing this, but the traffic, just, I think we talked a little bit about it last year at this meeting, with the one oh eight traffic, it's commuters, just, I don't, I don't even know where we would start to try to help solve that problem, but it is, it seems like it's just getting worse.
Traffic congestion.
Yeah.
Ways takes everyone through here, or whatever.
It does. I'd be interested to see what happens when the general solid bridge is finished.
Yeah.
So.
What is that?
Soon.
The bridge.
Yeah. I mean, the, the north side bound is open, and the south bound is, I mean, also a ten-minute.
Yeah.
This is just her.
Yeah, coming, the way it's finished, it was fabulous the other day.
But yeah, last year we had the issue with ways, because the one sixteen bridge would, basically, every Friday afternoon, everyone's going north or south.
Right.
Just get backed up, and they would send it down thirty-three to one oh eight now.
Yeah.
But there were days that I had, like a Saturday morning, it would be a traffic backup, almost in Durham and Dover, because you could tell
Really?
Just getting around traffic, yeah.
I'd like to see if we could turn that into an opportunity.
I did score a couple regulars from those traffic checks.
Because that's a bunch of people trapped in our town.
It's a captured audience, right?
How do you get them to stop?
Right.
Instead of just pass through.
Right.
It actually is what we're doing. You have, basically now, when you get to Newmarket, you have to go slow, and you
Right, right.
Down, that helps.
See what's here.
Right.
Yep, good. So just to clarify, Amy, the sidewalk to the quality of, your sort of, is that your quality of life or economic development?
Um, well, gosh, it could be both.
It could be both, right, okay.
It could be both.
So, so yeah, so sidewalks and the commuter traffic?
Yep.
Yes.
Perfect.
Is it only downtown? Or any other areas starting to get
Well, Ash, my street gets, definitely gets
With people trying to cut around?
Yeah, you know, the rush hour times, and they go pretty fast down that road, which, you know, the, the police officers are out quite often, which slows them down hopefully. But, but yeah, it is increasing, even like up Ash Swamp, and then they go to Grant, or, you know.
Yep. Thank you.
Sure.
Go on.
Uh, well, I think that, so my biggest goal for the coming year would be to focus on, on energy, so renewable energy, and the environment in general. So, you know, we started this composting program, and that's fantastic. So reducing waste, and focusing on renewables, finding ways to implement more solar projects, just, you know, to start a, a larger solar project, I think is an opportunity that we have here in town. We've talked about putting some solar, and there's some plans in place for putting some solar on some of our buildings. But even, even probably more specifically, doing, you know, we talked about this in the Energy and Environment Committee, doing like a carbon map, you know, to see what our use, current usage is, and inventory, and, and then how we can reduce, specifically, you know, ways to, to make an impact in our small environment.
As a community and as a municipality?
Yes.
So it's both?
Yes, I think both.
Okay.
So I think an education outreach, you know, and that's something that the committee is already kind of thinking about.
Yep.
But a, an education component to our program, as well as, you know, things that we can do in-house.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Great. And that's the one?
Yeah, I mean, that's a big one. Then, you know, we've talked a little bit about, you know, the shoreline development, I think is really important, because
Keep it on the forefront.
Yeah, for sure. And, and then again, that community outreach piece in general, I think, is really important, and finding ways, you know, we use, we've done a, and Steve has done a really good job, I think, utilizing social media, and the website, and that sort of thing. But there's, there's gotta be some other way to connect with people, because people still don't have the information, and we don't have that old-fashioned newspaper, and I don't know what the answer is, but trying to find some way to, to connect with people. And maybe this new program will make a dent.
Be happy to send you mine, the Daily Sun, we can send them down here if you'd like, you know?
I know, careful what you wish for, right, but.
I don't know if you noticed, the news screens are in, in Town Hall.
Oh, no.
We started doing electronic message boards.
Yes.
And
I was staring at them for a bit.
I've gotten a lot of compliments, because people actually notice them now, and we're probably gonna do another phase, but definitely gonna happen, that we're gonna try to hit the other buildings.
Yeah, voting today, or whatever it may be, is just get the word out on things, so. Good. Thank you. Gretchen?
Um, I'm gonna maybe take Tony's first one, and ask the question of the council, whether we're like some other municipalities around the country, whether we're ready to go to the next step, which is actually make a commitment to a certain carbon footprint, achieve a more goal by a certain date.
Hanover did it.
Well, that's what I want, yeah.
Like twenty twenty-five, they want to be
That's what I'd like to see eventually.
You know?
I'm like, why wait? I'll, I'll raise you. You know, I don't know, maybe we need to talk about whether that's what we feel like the town wants to achieve, whether we're hearing that from people or not, or whether we want to set the pace and lead the community that way. I don't know the answer yet, we have to talk about it.
I think it's a godly goal, sir.
Uh, and then on, I have a couple other ones, but I'll just pick the, on the shared services. You know, it's underway, so I think we need, we are moving into, I don't know what we're gonna call it, continuous improvement mode. So we've had, we're gonna get some feedback from MRI, right? And that'll probably give us a plan for that, right?
Shared services, and they've been doing a lot with the school.
Right, we contract with the school for financial services, the school contracts with us for facilities.
Yep.
Services, and with our I T director retiring, that's another area that we can look at. But you're right, I want to see where we are, and what we can do to improve, what's working, what's not.
Okay.
And MRI data study?
They're in doing it right now.
They're, okay, they're. Thank you. Thank you, Gretchen. Zach?
Yeah. Two of my goals that I had had last year, the three goals that I had had last year, they, I feel like they're coming back to me again, because while we looked at them in some parts, I feel like there are some areas that maybe that we still need to put more attention to. So biggest one being transportation, in my opinion, exactly what Amy was saying, is that it's still one of those that it is of concern to me. I know Steve had mentioned at one point, the compact, is that what they call it? The Urban compact. Urban, an urban compact, some way that it would allow us to have greater oversight to access into our town, as well as perhaps allow us to modify things, especially on Main Street, to make it more welcoming for walkers and cyclists. I think that would go a long way. Um, let's see.
Just for you guys' benefit, we currently do not have an urban compact, so anytime we have to do anything downtown, we have to go to the state, get permission, come back.
Okay. Yeah, it's a lot of fun.
Yeah. To the point where the commissioner of D M T was in my office three times ago.
Yeah, let's figure it away, yeah.
I'm also curious to see about potentially expanding access to some of our more natural resources, like, you know, especially on the waterfront. One of the ideas that I had floated with Dale a little while back was potentially maybe looking at a river walk of some sorts. In my hometown of Manchester, we worked fairly extensively to, to get a river walk system in place that abuts some areas in Goffstown. I think there were some areas where the city went, you know, wrong, and it stalled the project a bit, but I think Newmarket's a wonderful community for that, especially if you go out to areas like Heron Point. It's kind of what I had.
Oh, perfect. So it brings the conversation again up about the waterfront, which we've heard here tonight already. Good, thank you. Steve?
Um, continue economic development efforts on the gateways and expand it, use of the Wilson property.
That was the farm?
The old farm.
Okay. And who owns it?
The town.
Oh, you do, so I missed that part, okay.
The road.
Okay.
Yeah, it's about a twenty-acre lot. It's got some potentials. Hopefully, it's a low-hanging fruit, but.
What's the name of the farm?
The Wilson?
It's not contaminated, is it?
It's not.
That's usually the biggest hiccup on someone like that.
And the problem is, it's a, it was bought for commercial purposes in a residential area, and it's zoned, business industrial.
Okay.
Yeah, the only access is through a residential area, and
Have they been to Pride?
Yeah, they've been to Pride.
Yes, I know, exactly. I know, yes, I've been to your place, it's kind of like, their headquarters, and all of a sudden you're in this like really residential neighborhood, and all of a sudden there's this headquarters building.
The commercial zoning is conquered on the Bow Line, literally, like it came right across this street, and it's like, people are like, am I, they call, are we going the right way? We're like, keep coming!
Yeah.
You know?
So that's one. Gretchen mentioned the one about the shared services, so I think that's
Shared services?
Just to look at it.
Yep.
My other one would be just some basic review of operational revisions, everything from some basic changes to the charter, to ordinances that we can look at. For example, it comes up every year that the council gets elected on the second Tuesday in March, I can't, I can't remember the fact right now. But then they take office the next week, and there's no time for them to learn anything. Whereas, in, since we have a charter, we can put in whatever time we want. Whereas, in a city, if you get elected in November, you have until January to learn a lot of things and how to operate. There's that, there's just some tweaks that need to happen in the, in the charter that, we, it's been five years since we had a last charter commission, it's just a couple small things. Ordinances is just to look to make sure, one, are they enforceable? Are we doing the right thing still? So it's sort of almost like a government operations review.
Because sometimes they can be prohibitive to what you're trying to actually do out there, yeah. Good.
Would that include maybe like repealing out-of-date laws, or maybe rewording stuff that's more twenty-first century?
You might scratch that, because Gretchen brought that up.
Very in favor of that.
Exactly, those kinds of things.
Right.
I've actually
Well, the one, the cycling
We still have, but you've got to get a license.
Yeah, yeah.
I've actually had a couple of people email me about some old stuff in the ordinances that they think is kind of useless, or perhaps
And we find stuff that needs to be added.
Yeah.
For example, I think that was the, the controversy of the raffle permit.
Yeah.
Right.
We had, we didn't have a raffle permit, the state law requires us to have a raffle permit.
Correct, yeah.
And everybody's like, that doesn't make sense, I'm sorry, but it had to happen.
You have to have one. As kind of frustrating as it can be.
Yeah.
You're right. Is that good, that's good? Thank you, Steve. Jonathan?
I was thinking, parking, the perennial issue. And I would love, I mean, I don't think we're gonna do it in a year, obviously, but I would love to figure out what we gotta do to redevelop the post office spot. I mean, I know that other people would
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Redevelop the post office, like half of it's not being used, and it would be a prime location for a parking lot, if nothing else. Especially with potentially change in administration. You know, there might be an opportunity if there wasn't, yes.
I'm like, where's Steve going? Did you leave it?
So there might be possibilities. I think some people have pursued that and have hit some roadblocks through lack of
Is there possibly more parking?
Yeah, parking, but particularly that spot, because right now, it's right in the middle of our town, and half their building's not even being used, and it would be ideal for, for parking. And other people have gotten through this process, but I don't know how far they've gotten, or what has caused the
The two thousand and six study talked about that location as being like
It's been kind of a constant thorn. So I just like, at least know what you gotta do, you gotta, who does that?
I talked to, it was Senator Ayotte's staff at the time, and also tried to work for G S A to get down the road, and they basically said, unless you provide us with property in a building
Hey, there's an old McDonald's.
Equal, that we don't know. Equal or more valuable than the current one, then I go watch. So that's the, that's what we keep trying to hit through.
They understand that there are two post offices, like a mile that way?
That doesn't matter.
Because I think there's another one that way, too.
It doesn't matter. That's not the point. Post offices for the town, not for the
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have else?
Uh, the other one was just trying to encourage ride sharing through, like maybe some short-term parking, so that, you know, if someone's dropping people off.
Are you looking for like a drop zone for ride shares?
I think that's what they're doing in some bigger cities, because there's so many Uber drivers, they'll literally make loading zones that aren't for unloading, you know, goods, they're for
Not a bad idea. I like it.
You know, they have them at Fenway.
Do they?
Yeah.
I think it might help, because a lot of people in town don't realize you can get Uber and stuff in town, but because of U N H, there's like, there aren't always drivers.
Seriously.
Somebody, a colleague of mine, Barbary, used the other day, speaking of Fenway, he went to Fenway, and he used that Wiz Park app.
Yeah.
So for forty bucks, he literally pulled into Kenmore Square, no trap, you know, just pulled in, the parking spot was there for him. It's like a, you rent the spot for that duration of time during that event. It's there for you. He, and it was valeted, like the hotel was renting the extra spots on Wiz Park on this app. He, and it was valeted, like, the, the hotel was renting the extra spots on Wiz Park on this app.
Wow.
Have you ever used it?
I've seen it, I haven't used it.
It's wild, he said it was amazing, you know, pulled in, pulled out.
Wow.
It was good, good to go, so businesses can make money off of extra parking spots that go, you know, unused. Thank you, John. Helen?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, this year we added, um, a liaison position to the Newmarket business community, um, and I've been serving on that, and they've actually made me a non-met voting member of the board, so I sit in on all their board meetings now. Um, they're very excited, they feel that they're, they have a, an ear now to, a, a voice, somebody to give them a bit of a voice to the council for their concerns. Um, and as a prior small business owner, I think a lot of what goes on in this town is because we have vibrant small businesses all along the main street now. So I think those are voices that, that we need to hear, and we need to listen to. Um, so I'm, I'm pleased to, to, to be the person that's kind of running that at the moment, and I'd, I'd like to see that continue to grow.
Okay.
Um, I did suggest at our last meeting that, um, now that I'm sitting on, you know, on their board meetings, it would be nice if some of them sat in on some of our town council meetings.
Yep, maybe they wanna report on it.
So I've, I've, I've shared that with them, that, you know, there are many meetings that there is no one from the community, either the business or the residents, sitting there, and it would be nice to see some faces. Um, the other thing I'd like us to look at is, um, the possibility of putting in some electronic car charging stations in town. Um, I know there's some town, some people now that will look to see where can I go and park my car for an hour, and what is there to do around that area? So I'd like to look into the possibility of having two or three of the spots maybe up at the parking lot near the, near the library, or somewhere in town that would allow people access to the downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Come, park your car, charge it up, and visit the restaurants, come and visit the stores.
Mm-hmm, excellent. Just to clarify your first goal, so you wanna grow the partnership?
I wanna grow that relationship, yeah.
The relationship with the small business?
And, and continue to encourage them to come to our meetings, to voice, they, I know the other day when I was there, they said, oh, I saw you're doing an economic, um, development plan, we'd like to have some input into that. And I said, well, I'll keep you informed as to where that's going.
Excellent, okay.
And maybe they'll come to the meetings and offer their opinions.
There you go, win-win.
Absolutely.
Casey?
Um, yeah, and a lot of good stuff up there, I, I kinda put down, looking at how to optimize or become more efficient, and that, you know, can do with things like uh, solar, or just trying to go paperless with our documents and electronic, and just trying to simplify what we do to run a little bit more lean, too, so I think it would kinda overlap with, yeah, solar.
Some of it's been said so far, yeah.
Carbon footprint, all that stuff, but just, how can we be as efficient as possible?
Mm-hmm.
And I think that would be a, another way to sell it, so it's not just that we're being green, but we're being, you know, energy efficient and smart, for that kinda stuff, too.
Yep.
Um, and I know, you know, car charging station, whatever, um, there's a, this, uh, a college near where my school is, and they have a parking lot where they have covered parking, but it's solar panels.
Yep.
And it's nice and subtle, but it's a smart use of space.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's just a, something I kinda noticed. Um, yeah, so I don't know, optimize, be more, more efficient, and the second thing I had was, I guess just downtown in general, and, and the reason I said that in general was that I think the waterfront, waterfront really needs some attention, especially, uh, the park, with all the erosion, I think there's gonna be some, it's gonna be a long-term expensive type thing, but I think to start getting the ball rolling on that, um, and as, as great as town looks and has come along, just how to, how to use downtown as a, a billboard or a, a business sign for the rest of our town, I just think that's so important with, whether it be the post office, whatever.
Okay.
You know, parking.
We have the eyeballs every day.
Yeah, exactly, that's why, you know.
Let's get 'em something to look at.
Good. So, Steve, is it okay if we, Madam Chair, if we just recess for like five minutes, uh, while Shelley and I sort of, I think there's a lot of common threads here, it's gonna take us five, maybe six minutes just to put some headlines down, and then we can, is that okay?
Yeah, can I add one quick thing?
Sure, yeah.
Um, something that I just thought of as we were all talking, and one of the things that's been from, it's been like one of our goals every year that, or, or at least has been talked about, even if it's not an official goal, is the idea of regionalization and sharing services, and so we have, we've checked a lot of boxes, right, we've done, I think we've done a lot, but I wanted to make sure that I mentioned it, because I think that one of the reasons that we've done a lot is because we keep talking about it, and, you know, people long before me started really sort of beating that drum, and I think it's important that we keep that somewhere, it doesn't need to necessarily be one of our goals, but I wanted to make sure that I brought it up, because I think, um, you know, even on the Energy Committee, we were talking about, um, uh, the steam machine that Dover is using, and is there a way that we can share machinery like that, I mean, I, and I know there are issues involved, um, but like dispatch has been a real positive, um, for the town, and, and there's, I'm sure that there are things that we're not thinking of, and so that regionalization piece and sharing services with the school is something that I don't wanna lose track of.
Your many neighbors. Yeah, well, you used the, uh, you know, Casey used two key words, optimize and efficiency, and that's, that leads to, that regionalizing hits those two words, you know.
But also remember the MRI report, that's how then we run too late.
Oh, yeah, yeah, don't.
Yeah, that was a big thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, and then I think, I see those as two separate things, really, you know, but the, the finding ways, you know, we talked about it with the street sweeper
Yeah.
a year or two ago, and, and it's not easy to find a way for neighboring communities to share resources, because we all wanna use them at the same time, and that's a problem, but, you know, when we operate in our individual silos, it's hard, you know, to, it's hard for the entire region.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is real important, is it okay? Yep.
Sounds good.
Okay, so I, you know, nothing is final here tonight, um, you know, Shelley and I still need to get back to the office and tweak and fine-tune everything, and find the right words we wanna use and all that stuff, like we've done in the past, uh, but what, we kinda put it back into three goals again, and, and three common, and two of them you've already heard before, one being economic development, where we're focusing, uh, some time, uh, with Steve's time and with the contracted economic development team uh, there, number two, we titled the goal Quality of Life, that's, and we used it in last year's goal, which is, you know, what are some additional quality of life goals that you wanna achieve over the next year, and lastly, there's a whole lot of talk about sustainability, I know that's a broad term, but sustainability as a municipality, as a community, uh, solar, finding ways to be more efficient, uh, in how you, uh, operate, either in your carbon footprint, talking about maybe addressing what something like Hanover did, which is, we wanna be this carbon neutral, we wanna reduce carbon footprint by X percentage point by twenty twenty-seven, whatever it might be, you know, that's not something you're gonna achieve over a year, but you could, over the next year, you could figure out what that number looks like and what that year, uh, looks like, that you wanna be carbon neutral, or reduce your carbon footprint by X amount, okay, does that make sense? Okay, so we had eight, eight of you in the room, and you gave two goals apiece, that's sixteen goals, not every goal can make it on up there, and so the one that came to mind was Steve's operational one, it just didn't fit anywhere else.
We're still doing it.
You're still doing it, and that's what Shelley and I said to each other, so I was like, well, he'll, he'll get it done, so. And that's generally what happens when, when the administrator or manager always has one or two goals that's very different
Yeah.
uh, than the, than the council or selectmen, that's very, very common. So let's talk about number one first, economic development, and, uh, you know, we, we slid the Wilson Farm property, we'll talk about that last. Uh, economic development, continue shared services, and look into regional services, I get what you wanted to keep on the pipeline. You think MRI is in-house right now, you know, looking at your shared services, should they continue, should you do more, you know, what are the other options? I'm not sure what the scope of the service is, Steve?
Just one department at this point.
Just one department, okay, um, and, uh, you know, I think, uh, it's hard to put a date around that, but I think a, a goal for the council and Steve is, it should just always be on the forefront, I think it's an ongoing goal, which is, when you see an opportunity, can, is there, should we have a conversation around, you know, is there a way to be more efficient here? Uh, is there a way to regionalize this service, those types of things? Continue to push the waterfront project forward, that, I'm gonna have to, we're gonna have to have a little conversation of what baby steps look like to push that project forward, what needs to be achieved to get off the ground, whether it be a monetary, uh, issue, or just wetland issues, I'm not sure, what's it gonna take to get that project off the ground? Uh, let's start that discussion, if that's okay?
I think one of the big things is almost steering to the, like, Shanda Park, they're, not, Shanda, Shop Meyer Park, yeah, somebody that can sort of spearhead it that's not part of the government, 'cause sometimes we get in our own way because of regulations and rules, but they could work easier than we can, so I think that's one of the big things.
Are you looking for a private group to investigate and then work with the town, or are you talking about?
Yeah, I mean, that's ultimately, it'd come back to the town, but it, I think it'd be, it'd be, it needs to be a committee of some sort that's not us, because we've already got too many things on the plate, they need to spearhead it, and usually, if you do something like that, the biggest cheerleaders for those kind of things, and they can raise money.
Is that something that, um?
NCDC.
Thank you, NCDC can, could potentially be a partner with?
It could, yeah.
Yeah.
I wonder if they've got any major projects going to go on?
Not yet.
So you wanna form a committee?
I would suggest.
I suggest, what do folks think about that?
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
What exactly, I'm just curious what everyone else, what they're, what they think of when you say development of the water, or project?
I think it's a river wa, a river, a river walk, basically to be able to get Heron Point to Shanda, see how far up we can get, 'cause we actually do have access up to, outside the wastewater plant.
Yeah, there's a.
Yeah, so.
And is that, in the town, would own all that whole strip all the way up?
Or have a right of way, yeah. Yeah.
And I guess you're even there, is that like, you and Shanda Park, there's so much work that up to you went to it, to link a bigger plan together, it might make sense to do it in, in.
And, and this is a perfect time to say, I think we have to look at the ownership of the parks, the only reason why the town isn't doing anything for Shanda Park, we don't own it, Conservation Commission does. I think if the town owned it, and had the administration of it, it'd be a higher priority, because every time we can't do it, 'cause we'd have to go to the Conservation Commission, and you have to go through the process, versus I could just say, hey, yeah, I'll go fix it.
Why, is that just because of how it was given to the town?
Yeah. It was given as a conserva, it, it's odd that a park like that is given as a conservation area.
Is that un, unchangeable?
No.
No.
It, but it's not on our side that has to do it.
Okay.
I can't go take it.
And it seems like there's some interest, or at least have that conversation, we have a meeting tomorrow night on conservation.
I'd say just, yeah, to be, to be honest, when the Shop Meyer Park.
Lay it up there.
But those who are organized in the Shop Meyer Park, they were originally gonna give it to the conservation, but they didn't wanna run into the same thing that happens with Shanda, and they requested, could we take, could the town, even though it's a conservation one, take maintenance, and that's what it indeed says, that we control maintenance of it.
Zach, did you wanna trim in?
Uh, I was just gonna say, you know, for, for a vision, you know, whether it's starting with Shanda or somewhere down in that area, going along the falls, you just kinda continue that path.
Yeah, that's cool, that's what I did.
You know, something like real tangible that you could either go out and walk on, I know that there's some mention about maybe going out over the water a little bit, but you can't really walk the water going on either side.
So it sounds like everyone's on board with some sort of a steering committee?
Right.
When do you want to figure out what that steering committee looks like, which is X amount of people to be on it, and then, and a charge, that's important, too, you can appoint a committee, but if they don't have any structure or guidelines, and the committees go like this, uh, very quickly, so formulation of committee and charge by what would be a reasonable date, or something like that? Fall?
Yeah, I was gonna say November.
November?
Yeah.
So eleven, one?
You think it would take that long to find folks to, what is it, okay, I don't have experience with this, so.
You, 'cause you, you're gonna wanna have the, the right team.
Okay.
For this system, they need to be committed.
Yep, okay, good. I put continue sidewalk improvements and economic development, they could go under quality of life, but the reason I put in a continued sidewalks improvements is 'cause what you described earlier was, how do we continue the length to bring people downtown, to either with, to walk or with a bicycle, rather than congest it with cars? And so, how do we continue to improve the lengths that we have built off of our core to bring people, whether it's a clover, or it becomes a, a big star, just driving people, you know, into your downtown, so that's why I put it on economic development, 'cause I think it's a, it's a feeder program into your downtown, whether it's snowing, or, or it's a day like today, it's seventy-five degrees.
Right.
And so, that, my guess is your DPW has some sort of planning?
I literally have to, it's my fault, I have not signed the document today.
What document's that?
We are updating the sidewalk plan.
Okay.
So, that should be done, I would say, this fall.
Okay.
And I think there are other ways to incorporate walkability, it doesn't necessarily have to be a sidewalk, and we.
Well, yeah.
You know, those are things that we could, we could maybe examine, you know, at, um, different pathways and, and.
Right, maybe like better define pedestrian crossings, if they're, you know, starting to fade, or, you know, get built up or anything.
Yeah, yeah, is there a place to put a bump out, it doesn't, you know, for pedestrian safety and things like that.
Right. Right, so downtown stuff, yeah, but I mean like, um, ways to bring people into town.
Yeah.
And another big one I, I get a lot is, they're requesting a sidewalk from Bay Road, to bring them into downtown.
I've heard people ask for one, I know this is kinda far, but out to, um, Lita Lane, you know, there's frequently people walking on that side of the road, I don't know if there's a better way to get them.
Pathways in there, too. Not only sidewalks.
Yeah, we had a loss. We had a plan.
You said Lita Lane?
Yeah, like across an industrial, um, park, there's just a, there's like kind of a lot of people living in there, and they frequently are walking.
Yeah.
You know, on one way.
I don't think it's a bad idea, I know that, um, somebody keeps mentioning putting a light over there, not happy about, but there's a lot of traffic, too, that, um, if you're looking to turn left to go up to Hershey Lane, we'll just cut around on the right, and I've seen people nearly get clipped there.
Oh, I know, yeah.
It's not good.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, good, that wraps up goal number one, which is economic development at the start, oh, it was Wilson Farm up top here, and so, uh, again, I would, I would lean to you to tell me what, what's that first step that needs to happen, what's that baby step?
You have a proposal on possible redevelopment of it.
Okay.
Or a reuse of it.
And who would supply that proposal, a developer, or you're looking for?
I, I will give a plan to the council.
Okay.
Shortly.
Okay.
Do you have a number of items under consideration, or are you looking at just the one?
Just one.
So shortly means by like August first?
Yeah.
Okay, proposal to the council by August first for the Wilson property.
Proposal redevelopment, TA by eight one.
Yep, done.
Reuse.
Reuse.
Reuse, gotcha.
Okay. How'd you get that property?
We bought it 'cause Monroe Drive was just, they were gonna lure Cabletron in.
They were gonna what?
Lure Cabletron there.
Oh, Benson's old company, no kidding, oh, okay, quality of life.
The things you learn.
Things you learn. Newmarket was in the business of buying property years ago, huh?
I mean, get rid of it.
Yeah, try to get rid of it, yeah. Quality of life, uh, address commuter traffic and congestion in, in the downtown, is your commuter traffic, I, I'm trying to wrap my head around how I give you advice on how to even facilitate discussion around it.
It's not our road.
I know Rockingham, um, is the Rockingham Economic Development, whoever oversees the highways, I think they're starting their ten-year plan in like the next year.
The state, state DOT does for the ten-year plan, we are under Stratford Regional Plan and Commission, Rockingham does it for Exeter, so we do through Stratford.
Okay, I guess I was thinking the Newfields, that highway coming, or one away.
So here's the other kicker, Newfields in the Rockingham, the, and Rockingham Plan and Commission, or the Stratford, so Newfield is looking at it, but we're not in the same group as them.
Yeah. But do they all do this ten-year plan at the same time?
This is the state DOT.
Yeah, so isn't that coming, I think, isn't that coming up in the next two years?
Does, it's almost every year, they update it.
Oh, okay, I thought they did like a big plan for the next ten years.
Yeah.
I think you're probably, your best course of action, if I was off the top of my head, was just to continue to advocate for yourselves to the state that says, look, we're having, we're having headaches down here, you need to help us relieve some of the pressure.
The other is to throw the urban compact.
Yeah.
How tangible is that?
Yeah.
And realistically, what would we need to do to make that happen?
There's two acts, there's two ways to do it.
Adopt urban compact.
Working with the town, town attorney, one is, um, commission, if primary transportation can grant it, or we can have legislation, uh, drafted to change it, we're trying to go the first route, 'cause it's more difficult, I'd rather work with DOT than try to go around with legislation.
Urban. Urban, okay.
And basically, what in, the town have to realize is that means, basically from, I would say, what everyone considers the downtown, I mean, from the town line in Durham, up to Grant Road on one fifty-two, to the town line in, um, Newfields, those roads, which are maintained by the state, put in quotation marks, will now be maintained by the town alone, so any issues paving that we have maintained, they have to take care of it. Problem, we already know we do it.
Yeah.
Because then the state even admitted that, because they don't get here to pick it up, and we can't have that.
Is there a, a way that we could define it to just the main?
No, 'cause they would, you, you have to be all in.
They would, okay, so they, we'd have, all right.
Would that alleviate problems with like signs by the school, things like that?
Yes, because we have the control of it.
Right.
So it might, there would be an added benefit.
Yes, there'd be a lot of added benefit because of the fact that, like, for example, when we wanted to put the, the crosswalk, and we wanna have a, a pedestrian, 'cause you're, the parking lots on one side of the street, the schools on the other, we put in on our own the signal. DOT came down on us, and you gotta remove it, and we're like, it doesn't, you're not, you're not even making sense here. even making sense here.
Right.
And we had to fight with them to put it back in. We had to, we actually had to buy a new one because it wasn't up to the right standard on their side. And you wouldn't know you're on like, it's not like a highway we're talking about. It's an urban area, which would, AKA an urban compact. So we should be doing that. It's just, it was never accepted when they started doing.
When do you think your, your conversations with the commissioner will commence enough to, for you to advise council?
I would say winter, spring of '20.
Okay.
Because I think we, the attorney's looking through everything now.
Yeah.
Would that be on our end? Would that be following up with like coordinates or a resolution or?
I think at some point I'll need a resolution from the council requesting to go that, you know, stamping it saying, yes, we want an urban compact.
Then they sign off on it.
No, then we negotiate, then you probably have another one actually accepting the urban compact.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, that could be a bigger conversation too that the council has, just in, you know, what are our goals, what we want to bring to DOT, you know, for whether that's, you know, two-year, three-year, 10-year on our end? Because I know when we had, when they had the meeting that was here, right?
The 10-year.
Last year, the 10-year meeting. I think Dale, you and Dale went. And, you know, Stratton was well represented and very organized. And they've been petitioning DOT for a light for a long time. And so we, I don't know that we have the plan, I don't know that we know what we would want to petition them for. You know, now we do with the urban contract.
We don't want them. That's, we're, Stratton wants them because it's 33 and they want to like, versus we're like, leave us alone. We want to do it ourselves.
Right.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll wait back. That's an important conversation. And that's an important decision to be made.
Yeah.
Because that obviously has ramifications in a sense. If you were to adopt urban compact, that, that larger area becomes yours. But the beauty of it is it's yours. Decisions can be made in a timely fashion where you're not constantly fighting the tape. So, good. These next two are sort of together, which is really to continue to upgrade your parking options. Anytime you see an opportunity that there could be a parking lot or you could add an electronic car charging station, where are you going to put them? Explore ride share off, I think that was pretty neat, ride share options to have, whether it be, you know, a ride share lot or a parking, almost like a Newmarket parking lot. You did it yourself, you know, where folks can, you know, if they work out the university, they park here in town, ride out to the university together, whatever it may be. Do you have a parking committee, Steve? Anything like that? No, nothing like that happening? Okay.
My suggestion would be update the parking plan that was done in '06. It's been 13 years. We just get a consultant to come back in and update it. Why, you know, why reinvent the wheel if you already have something there? I think most of us read it. It's not that, it's not, not that out of date.
It's a solid document. For someone who's new last year, it's very informative.
Okay.
And it's about being creative because really, we can't add more physical space.
No, it's about creativity. It's 100% right. Yeah.
Change the way we use it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like Johnson said.
So Steve, when, when could that be? Do you have to wait till the next budget cycle?
I'd have to get a price because I don't, I mean, if it's tens of thousands, I don't have it.
Okay. So TA to explore funding for current budget cycle. If not, be put off to the next one. Okay.
Is that something that we could potentially reach out to somebody over at UNH for? Would they have the resources to?
Did Stratford do your last one for you?
No, we just use a private consultant. To update it, I really would want it done quickly in a certain way. And I don't think UNH may have that.
Okay.
The capacity.
Yeah.
But quickly because we're going to act on it?
Quickly because I don't think it needs to be done. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. So I don't think UNH, I think it would be, you'd have to get a student in, and then it would take a couple of months to get that done. And they're getting, you know, and then all of a sudden they go away free.
It's going to come out of this.
So it's always that difficult.
All right, goal number three, which is sustainability. This is a big one. It has a lot of moving parts. And so let's start off with this one first, which is talk about what Gretchen brought up, which is do you want to have the conversation at some point this year that says, we want to reduce our footprint by X amount of percentage points?
I think that's a good way to start it.
I think that's already underway.
And I think, yeah.
You know, on the committee level.
That's where I think it should start.
And then it will, it'll push to the council at some point. So it's something that we've already started talking about.
So the Energy Committee is having the conversations now?
We just had our first real serious conversation about that, yeah.
Okay.
So we know what the carbon.
Recommendation from the Energy Committee.
No, so that's the first piece. Yep.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'd like to see the map first before we go about setting a goal.
Absolutely.
Do you know, is there, for other municipalities that have gone this way, is there a timeline to how they look at determining proper levels of reduction as opposed to saying like, oh, 10% in two years? Or is there like a thorough step-by-step process we could put in place to really like address how we work it down?
I would think that we could do whatever, whatever we wanted in that regard.
Okay.
And definitely looking at the models that other towns have done. In this particular instance, UNH is a great resource.
Okay.
And so, I mean, they're really a leader in the sustainability movement. And they have, and they have a lot of, a lot of resources that we can draw from. So I think that we'll be able to do that. Yeah.
Plus Steve's going to be able to call Julia.
Yeah.
And have a 10-minute conversation about how'd you come to this.
Give me your, give me your plan.
Where's the matrix? What matrix could you use to arrive? Because that's what you're looking for, some sort of matrix. You know, here's what I have. How do I, how am I going to get here, whatever the way it's going?
Right.
And so those are two great resources between UNH and Hanover.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm assuming Dartmouth.
That's the thing, is that Dartmouth probably helped.
Yeah.
So is there any date around when the recommendation or no?
Anything you think the conversation?
Do you need a deadline or you just want to continue now?
By year's end?
Uh, yeah.
Let's clarify year's end. Are you saying calendar year's end or fiscal year's end?
You're a fiscal year budget?
Right. It was just, our year's ending now.
It's just ending.
Right.
So June 2020?
I, well.
We could say spring 2020.
For, for an, for a recommendation to the council? Yeah, probably spring. Let's say spring.
Spring 20?
Let's say spring.
Okay. Yeah. I think in that process, Tony, if correctly from wrong, as you study that, this, this committee with help from UNH or whoever it may be, might, you'll tackle some of the stuff, which is your current footprint, carbon footprint for the community. Because you have to realize what that is before you can figure out how you're going to shrink it.
Right.
So that goal sort of goes with this.
Yep.
Whatever matrix you're going to find. It sounds like the committee is working on exploring different forms of energy for the community.
Yeah, or installing solar panels.
So that's ongoing now. So we'll put ongoing from committee and town level.
And that's everything from composting, you know, so reducing municipal waste to, we're looking into ways to reduce plastics in town. I mean, everything. Yep.
Yeah, because recycling isn't exactly the greatest business anymore.
Recycling.
The composting, I'm digging. I want to give Steve a call on this.
What else? What am I missing?
And we're looking at EV charging stations. So, I mean, we talked about that in another, in the economic development piece too.
There's other things we've already accomplished that we've mentioned. So there's things like the facilities directors with the energy efficiency. Just lots of incremental projects going on. So maybe that can be leveraged in conjunction with the goal at some point.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
I think just to build that in for like the future buildings and upgrades and updates just to be like, we're going to continue to push for efficiency.
And that's where this, your goal and some of the words you brought up, it's ongoing in a sense. Every time we tackle a project, our Steve and department head's going, okay, are we sustainable? Are we using right forms of energy, whatever it may be? It's no different than every time you pave a road, the DPW, if you're going, do we need to put a sidewalk in, water pipes underneath, infrastructure? Those, it's just changing the way we think when it comes to sustainability. We've been doing it for a long time for roads and things like that, but it's.
And I do think to highlight, I mean, I, obviously I care about the sustainability piece, but just to also market it as this efficiency piece. Like, we're not doing it to spend more money. We're doing it, it's good on multiple levels, I guess.
Multiple. Yeah.
Might be worth trying to like maybe set a metric with which the town would like to see not just old buildings sit at in terms of efficiency, but anything new that comes online. We should be at least X and aim for Y when we put it in. I know over at UNH, for example, James Hall, they went very big on sustainability practices for that one building to see how it would work out. And it's had some successes. It's had some areas where they've let it slip, but just, you know, having that goal in mind of all new town facilities hitting this, hitting that, you know, et cetera.
The rule of thumb for us, we're hearing on the municipal side is you want to try